This is just timely communication.
Yes.
You can't just.
I call the order of the city council work session for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one is now five o'clock. Would a city clerk please call rule?
Here.
Council President.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehfeld.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helm.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Park Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does term corn number one request to start promotional and hiring process? Chief Bushy.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. One of my assistant fire chiefs just informed me that he's going to retire at the end of March. So what I'm doing is requesting that you would authorize civil service to start the internal promotional process for assistant chief and engineer, and then authorize a process for hiring a new firefighter, and with this starting in January, January first.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Demers.
Is, um, is the assistant chief position, is that in the bargaining unit?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Number two, request for approval to the Denim Three to the Special Operations Group Joint Powers Agreement, Chief Fedlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just bringing back before you a slight alteration to the existing joint powers agreement for our special operations here, looking to add on Grand Forks Fire Department. They're only going to be part of one team, but either the case of the joint team.
Do you have any questions for Chief? See you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks. Number three, review of proposed two thousand and twenty-two budget. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I'm not used to being up so high up on the list. Thank you.
Save you the hand.
So I just mail, I, excuse me? Yeah, exactly. So I updated, I sent out to all of you, I don't know if you've seen it or not, on an email on where we're at now with the budget. If you did not get the email, I'm pretty sure Megan gave them to everybody. So we're at four fifty-seven, four fifty-six of expenses over revenues with the five percent levy. And what I said in the email is those are changes due to pretty much personnel. There was ninety-six hundred dollars. Drug Force Task is going to contribute to the City of East Grand Forks for a little more of administrative assistance we're going to give for the drug task force. So they're going to pitch in ninety-six hundred dollars. The other changes are is that we're looking at filling administrative assistant position at the police station at fifty or seventy-five percent. And so we have savings there. And then we also looked at where we're at with personnel. And since September, we have had person employees that have changed probably from like family to single, or some that have waived their insurance because their spouse has it or such. And that's where those savings are from. So I guess at this point, I, I would entertain suggestions or questions that the group may have. Or David, please.
And I guess, before we get that, so with those recent changes, we're, as Carla said, we're down to four fifty-seven. I just want to take note of that. I think it's on page seventeen of your packet. So of that four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three thousand of it is from the personnel, which again are run by union, by the contracts. I will say that I think we are in a better position here for two thousand and twenty-two than a lot of other cities due to the fact that we had a longer term contract. And we did get them in at a, I'd say, a favorable rate. With what the CPI is doing is, other cities are not, do not have that same amount. So there's two seventy-three there. We had a change in attorney's fees of a hundred thousand and the transit increase of a hundred and ten, which most likely will disappear. So of that four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, really, more, four hundred and seventy-three are just those three items alone. So makes it a little bit difficult for some of the adjustments, just because those three are, you know, fairly set. So, but we'll take any questions.
You said of the four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-three is?
Actually, four hundred and eighty-three are, four hundred and eighty-three of an increase are those three items. But on the, on that same page, we had had some savings over the time there as well. So we had a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand decrease in, in savings up there. So it increases in savings. So it washes out to that five hundred and so.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions in? I'm sure Mr. Demers will know you want to ask a question.
Why not? You know, so I do have a couple of questions. So in the Admin Finance tab, it looks like we've got about a hundred thousand dollar increase to the city attorney. Is that? Yep. So is that due to what perceived increases in work for property acquisition?
No, actually, I'll, I'll, I can address that. And then if Ron wants to add anything to it, he can. Majority of this came from what our actual costs were. There's a couple of things that have changed over the, these last, I'd say, two years. One was we renegotiated the city attorney's contract, which made some changes, particularly more, they affected probably the police department more, as far as further prosecutions. And previously, it was getting a flat rate for that. We went to a more of a per hour rate for a host of reasons. And so with the, what the city attorney has been used for over the last several years, even with that change, we had been under budgeting for that. We, our actual expenses have been higher than what they were. So, so it's a combination of, one, it's the changes in the, in the contract. And number two, we're looking at putting it in more reflective of what our actual costs truly are.
Because like in nineteen and twenties shows actuals of one eighty-seven and two oh five, which are above the one eighty-seven we had budgeted last year, but not two hundred and eighty-seven.
No, I agree.
Go ahead.
I can kind of agree with some of that, too.
And I don't, I'm not trying to.
No, no, I, I, I just, so that you have the information.
Yep.
Some of that is my contract, and some of it is, is utilizing Kennedy and Graven and those types of things. It all gets lumped into attorney's fees. The other thing of it is, is since COVID, we've been doing five days a week for criminal law, where I was only doing two days a week, potentially at the most before. So I would say that a, a lot of it is just due to the fact that the court system is being functioning because they are behind in the processing of criminal files. What they've done previously before, I was, I was primarily doing just Wednesdays and then maybe another day a week. Right now, we're doing in custody's on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They've got me doing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday Zoom Court most days. The other thing of it is, Mr. Demers, is they've got, they're trying to get the backlog reduced from when they weren't able to have trials. They've, just recently, the state of Minnesota has granted some additional funding for senior judges to try to, you know, again, it's going to probably increase some of the, the time that we're there, but to get rid of the backlog. Prior to COVID or prior to this process, I probably had somewhere in the line of maybe a hundred open files at the most at any time on a weekly basis. Now I've almost doubled that to almost two hundred files. And then, for instance, tomorrow in court, I'm actually handling about sixty-five to seventy files just tomorrow. So a lot of it is because of the, because of the increase in COVID. I can see that that potentially will be reduced significantly once we resolve those issues.
So just so I get what the problem is, is it an increase of crime or just an inability for the system to process it due to regulations of who can get into the courts and all those type of things?
I think more than anything, it's, it has been the inability to process the files due to the, due to the restrictions on the court. And I haven't really tracked the, if there's been an increase in crime, Chief might be able to have a better, but from, from my standpoint, most of it would be because of the backlog of cases, because they shut down the court. They didn't have trials. They didn't have those types of.
So, and to that, you kind of started to answer my next question by saying it should diminish, or at least at some point, we'd hope that it gets back to a more close, closer to the mean or the norm.
I would agree with that.
At some point, who knows when that's going to be. I would have, my next question maybe is for, from Ms. Anderson, is that then, since this is a COVID-related thing, is that something that we could apply ARPA dollars to or, you know, any COVID relief-type dollars to?
So if you look at the ARPA dollars, there's those four sections again. And one of them has to do with increases to online, to frontline people. The other increases is to like mitigation. Another one has to do with, trying to think, and really, the only box what we can use the ARPA dollars for is for infrastructure to water, stormwater and sewer, not streets, just those, and, you know. And then the loss we have from nineteen to twenty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, those are dollars that we can use for specific projects, and they are not as limited as those four boxes.
I just.
So if that was a choice, we, we could decide on that. We've gotten half the money now, which is like four ninety-six. We got, for example, we got twenty-four thousand from state aids maintenance, because they had extra dollars left over. But we had to use that specifically for a project. So we're using that for the Millan Overlay Flood Project at River Road, because we have to pay twenty-five percent because it's a state emergency expense. It wasn't a federal disaster. So we use that for that project. So we have to specifically use it for projects or specifically items.
Right. I just, I mean, I think we should, even if we can't apply ARPA, or if we have any, I don't think we have any, whatever.
CARES dollars had to be, they had to be spent by November of.
Right.
Thirtieth of two thousand and twenty.
I just think it's something we should, even if we can't budget or account for it now, this is clearly something that's COVID-related that we should talk to our legislators about. They're going to be working with lots of dollars coming through. We should at least put a pin in this and ask for some relief on that. Thank you for that.
I know, I know the city of Crookson's having the same issue.
Right. And I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the hundred thousand was for. And it, it makes sense. It just, it's odd, I mean, that they hadn't had the foresight. Because I know there's been talk of how, you know, how to put new money into the court system because of some of these backlogs. But at some level, it needs to come all the way back to cities and other jurisdictions that are having to.
And you know that it's dealing with it because the state is actually designating to the court system senior judge money to be able to try to get rid of the backlog. And this is the second time that they've done it. And hopefully that it'll be the last that we can get caught up. But it's, it's too early to tell. I believe that the senior judges are going to be in place until end of June is when they've established it. They've also established a second kind of a referee system that they've designated money for to take care of, like, say restraining orders and those types of things that were normally done by the judges as well. So that's where the, the funding seems to be going at this point.
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
In the council and commission's budgets, notice that the mayor's getting an extra five thousand dollars to spend.
Yep. And that was on the list here. So every year, the mayor does the state of the city. Don't mean to pick on you. It's a good event, but yes, it, you know, it does cost money for us to put that on. Megan does a wonderful job putting that all together. This year, one of our added costs was HP and sound, and some other, other of the technical items were done by an outside contractor. So that was main, main increase on that. Isn't that correct, Megan? Okay. But I just listed because it was one of the changes.
Sure. This may also be a case of there's been some expense year after year, and finally we're capturing it and showing it, right? So it's good. I think it's appropriate. And, and that's an event that we do. So when did we start with H, like last year? Yep. Or was it, no, because the year before, we used Water and Light.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we did the virtual one with them in the first of COVID, and then we did the next one with them last year.
So I, the reason I increased is because I saw what we spent this year. And it was over budget because we didn't budget for them in there. So now I have to budget in for next year. So we won't go over.
So how much were we over, Carla?
That five.
Really?
Five thousand five hundred.
Does that include the amount that Water and Light put in?
No, but that goes into revenues. We can't, we, you know, we have to keep revenue and expenses separately. So the revenue came into another account and the expenses came out of there.
So Water and Light picked up a part of that.
So the three thou, Water and Light, I believe, gave three thousand dollars.
Of the five something?
Yeah.
Because historically, they had done it in kind with staff time and, and tech time. And so it was almost a wash on that part of it for the savings they had of their, their people time and the, and the technology and everything. So it wasn't an incremental cost of that five. It, roughly, the three was already being done by Water and Light. Yep. Okay. And then obviously, the next one I've got is library. We've got four FTEs. Currently, there's three. You know, we've had discussion in the past about what the needs are. Currently, there's an unfilled position. I think it should be up for council discussion, you know, how we want to fill that position, if we want to fill that position. I mean, it's currently in the budget right now at a grade seventeen, I believe.
Can I make sure that's the right amount? Because I know the FTEs, we just, I just got a better look at them today, and Charlotte can answer that better. And how many, as far as full-time people, yes, there's three full-time people and one that's vacant. And we do have six part-time people. So in the three, though, are you included in the three?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I'm sorry, but this is off. So there's only one and three.
Instead.
And there's one.
Administration is one.
One there.
Right.
And there's two.
And there's, there's one open and one filled in circulation. And then there's programming that would be.
So there's three budgeted positions. There's two that are filled other than yours. That's correct. Okay. So like right now, the, the budget is for four full-time equivalents. There's currently three full-time filled positions. Like I said, and we've talked just recently about this. And actually, it's been a conversation going back a couple of years about how we want to proceed with this, if it's the correct position, if it's, if we need an initial person, if we need additional two people, if we need it at a seventeen. I guess my perspective is that, number one, I think that we should have, I don't mind filling position in this spot. I don't think it should be a level seventeen-type position. I think we should shoot for, I guess I'd have to go back on my, my grades. But I, I think we could have a more broad discussion if we want to have one just on that position. But I think we should, we should look at something that doesn't require or recommend, you know, degrees or advanced degrees for that position. That's first part. Second thing I'll say is currently, we have three full-time librarians at our, is that correct? Three people with library degrees.
Two with library degrees.
Okay. We currently have two librarians at, in our things. At Northland, there's two. At the city of, or at the school jurisdiction, there's one. I, I don't see, and I hear from people that why should we have additional staff beyond what those, those institutions that education libraries are at the core of their mission, where I would say, this is my, my words, not anybody else's, but that library and education are not the principal mission of the city. You know, I, I've said it before, I don't think it is. So that's kind of my layout for that. I would say that we should either, on the extreme side, reduce that to a three FTE somewhere probably more negotiable, find someone, find a position that is, you know, closer to thirteen or twelve. I'd, I'd have to see what those do. But I, without the, the education requirements, maybe being more consider, considerate of what those job tasks would include. So that's my library rant up for discussion. A yield timer.
Charlotte?
So in the two thousand and twenty-two budget, it is a grade seventeen that is budgeted for that. The library board has talked about that grade numerous times, and we've done the work to repoint it at grade sixteen and at grade fourteen. Approximately every grade is about five thousand dollars in salary. We don't have anyone, any position right now that requires a library degree. We are fortunate to have two librarians with that degree in the library right now, which is, it's a wonderful thing. So to fill a fourth position to pick up the things that we hope will return once the pandemic has settled out and the community gets back to normal, the board has talked about having Plan B and C, knowing that we might have a different grade level, and that's fine. We can, we can work with that. And we have to determine if we're all going back to normal after the pandemic and exactly where we'll be. As far as Mr. Demers' comment about where the schools are, this, each school is very focused on an age group. Public libraries are focused on all age groups. That's the biggest difference. But we've also had conversations about how much we do for the schools. We keep in conversation, we have a regular, I have a regular conversation with Mr. Colness and with Northland about the services that they're providing, everything from tutoring to proctoring and for us going into the school systems. We can't fill their vacancies. That's something they have to do in their budget. We will support the schools, but we can't be their librarians in the school. And we are aware of that.
I have a question, Charlotte, if I may. So is this position like the assistant librarian? Are they the lead, are they a lead person?
At a grade seventeen, they would have been an assistant to me. That would be the, the second of the four full-time people. If we go down to a fourteen grade level, it, it will be a group effort. Whichever one of us is there at any particular time is the one that will take the lead. So I will be the supervisor, and the other three are the ones that are keeping it running.
So if you're gone, it's a group effort?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just asking because I know other positions, other, you know, we have the fire assistant, we have lead in park, we have in public work. So I just want to make sure. I was aware of that also. So thank you, Charlotte.
If I could, Charlotte, you and I have had this conversation verbally, but also in some emails. Would you please tell us the kinds of things you want to bring back? The media pick up on our council meetings and even for all of us to know, okay, this position opens the door to bring back these several things that are, are high value to our community. Would you please, for, for all of our sakes, kind of touch on some of those again?
Sure. The priority right now would be getting our volunteers back. To have a volunteer in the library, they have a background check, and they get training, and they're scheduled. We need somebody to help us coordinate that. We don't, we aren't doing any proctoring right now, which hopefully the schools are picking up more of that. We're not doing any tutoring, which is all volunteer-based. We train them, we get them set up, we recruit them. But the tutors are the ones that do that. We've had a lot of requests, again, from the schools and from parents. We do do outreach, other than the schools. We had a pop-up library at Good Sam's. We haven't been able to do that. We read over at Edgewood Vista, which we've been trying to get back over there. Those kinds of things are the really big things right now that are hanging out there. The newsletter is, is being picked up and shared amongst us, those kinds of things that we work very hard to get done in, in the hours that we have.
Any organization that is built to, to empower volunteers and facilitate the programming of volunteers, that's, that's money well spent, you know, to the staff hours. And then you can multiply that by five or 10 when you bring the volunteers in to the good that's being done off of that one staff person. So I think that's, that's a good thing.
Pre-pandemic, our volunteer hours added up to the equivalent of at least one FTE, if not one and a half.
Good.
Which saves a fair amount of money.
So we talked, you used to have a position that was just a volunteer coordinator.
Right.
Do you know what that was pointed at? I don't think it's on this list or whatever.
That had changed over time. It started at sixteen, and I believe we moved it to fourteen, when it went down to twenty-six hours. It had been a full-time position, and it went to twenty-six hours when the program coordinator became full-time. Then when we hired a public service librarian, we no longer had a volunteer coordinator or an administrative aide. So we've tried to keep the balance and the numbers down.
So if you went down to a, I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
I'm not saying this is what I'm for. I'm asking clarity. If you went down to fourteen, would that person be able to do what you need to do, or would you need to hire another part-time person? I'm just trying to understand if he went to fourteen.
That's a really good question. And I'll, right now, I would say it would depend upon who's filling that position. Right, exactly. It's, it's possible with the part-time people we have right now that we wouldn't have to hire another one. But we are working with three students, so every semester, the schedule changes. So that's, that might be, it might be where we need to hire one more person in the summer because we're doing, you know, summer programs, five days a week.
Somewhere, if you went to fourteen and had to hire a part-time, would you be back up to the seventeen costs? That's what I'm getting at.
No.
Would you already be up to fifteen?
That'd be part-time with health insurance.
No, it wouldn't make up the difference there.
But if you had a part-time person, it's only their salaries. There's, they're not getting any benefits. So it doesn't make a difference whether fourteen or seventeen on benefits.
We have excellent part-timers right now.
Well, you've had a hard time filling those two.
We've had a really hard time.
Like every other department.
Or any other business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And our department's also.
And I think Charlotte really, you know, put her finger on one thing that we're, I think every department is kind of working through is, you know, and I said this today is, you know, we can't just go back to two thousand and nineteen and say that that's the start point. Like, we almost are still waiting to find out where our baseline is going forward. What are, what's the new norm or what's the new reality? And kind of what I've expressed to her is, you know, my, one of my reservations is, as we get into this new norm, like, are we going to have the right model going forward? Are we going to have the flexibility to make that model going forward? And like, like I said, I'm not, I don't want to go to that three. I think that's a drastic thing to, you know, move down to three people. I, I don't think that's the right thing. But I want to make sure that we're at least in a position that is flexible enough that we can adapt to whatever twenty, twenty-three, and four, and five is going to get us. So I, I guess, I don't know if, if we can make a decision right now. But I would say, you know, if this gives, if we could give direction to the library board, you know, a, a, you know, something like a fourteen or fourteen, fifteen, or whatever that number is, I think if the volun, if that volunteer coordinator could be a fourteen, like, you can maybe increase that volunteer participation, like we've talked before. we've talked before. And part of my thing is, I always feel like people rise to their expectations and that we, you know, if we can find the right person, like, this person could, you know, enhance their position multiple times by increasing that volunteer base. But then again, maybe we're in a position where people don't want to volunteer anymore. You know, who knows? We don't know that. And so I guess my thinking is, is if we could give the library board a kind of a general direction of like a fourteen position, put that number in our budget, whatever that would be. I don't know what the difference between the two would be, but by next week, we could have that adjustment into our budget. I think I'd be fine with that. I don't know if anybody else has any reservations on that.
I think, excuse me, if that's the case, I think we could also give them the go-ahead to to start the process. How would we feel about that, fulfilling the position?
That would, it would be great for us, yes.
I'd be on board with that.
Start in for 2022. Yep.
Yep.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah. A couple of things that I don't think are being addressed fairly here. Everybody does it until I go on the library board. They do a lot of stuff over there. And East Banford uses that place a lot. The other thing that I know she doesn't want to say, but I'm going to say it, there's no reason that she should have to put in sixty, seventy hours a week, which is what she's doing. No reason she should have to do that. No other department head is doing that, guaranteed. That's why we need to have this step seventeen, so we can have somebody there that can run the phone, take care of things, so she can get back to her normal life, too. That's the big problem. We just, I mean, she can hire all kinds of part-time people, but the library isn't going to run as efficient or anything if you do that. I mean, and the only other option is you, 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 you know, close it down two days a week or three days a week. That's no good either, because people, people come to that place all the time. So that's the thing we're really missing here is, is the hours that she's putting in right now because she doesn't have the help that she needs. And that's very important because two things are going to happen, you know. She's going to burn out, and and if she leaves, if she was decided to leave or something, it's just going to deteriorate. Our library, we have something to be proud of there. That's a very good one. They do, I think if you go online in the library right now, they got all kinds of different programs going on over there, which they do. So I think, to me, the most important part is the hours that she's putting in. She should not have to do it. So.
When you advertise this position, do you not advertise a range, or do you advertise exact at seventeen? Do you not, do you, would you not advertise it as a range on that?
It's, it's the range of grade seventeen.
So it's only on the seventeen?
Right.
So.
So step one is seventeen through.
Right, right. I understand that.
Yep.
If we did bring someone in at a fourteen, Charlotte, with the other people that you have, so now you have one more full-time person, could you reallocate the workload such that you could get your your sanity back and confine your time closer to that forty?
Well, I think all department heads know forty is ideal, but not very, you know, routine. I appreciate that the board recognizes the hours that we're putting in. And the board has been very supportive of wanting to get a professional in that position. And that is what they have backed all the way along. I, I know people can be trained. I know we can find someone to fill that position. And if you advertise and you get people in there who apply, who cannot do it, we don't hire them. It's not an easy process to hire.
I think the other thing sometimes is Miss said if she does get the ideal person in there out of fourteen and they're doing work of a seventeen, they, they can ask to be reappointed. And I don't know what the whole process on that, David, is, but isn't there a way to do that? You know, especially if they're in a union, that if they're doing work out of their class, that they can come back.
Their job description, yeah, they would, they would file a request for reappointment.
So, you know, so we hire somebody at a fourteen, but they're really doing the work of a seventeen. Somewhere down the line, they could say, they could file a grievance.
Right. But I think what we would do is, I mean, we would try to go through the process of, you'd almost have to reverse engineer it with, whether it's Kennedy and Graven or whomever, to kind of build back the, you know, kind of find the happy medium between what they're trying to do and try to find one that's going to point out, we're going to point it before we, we have it. We're not going to say it's something is not what it is before.
So the job description would reflect the point.
Job description.
Yeah. The job description would reflect the point.
And have it pointed.
Where it is.
Yeah, absolutely. So it may, might take a couple of drafts to get to where everybody wants to be, but I don't think.
Did you want to speak for me?
I'm, I'm Renee.
You have to come up to the mic, sorry.
That was going to be my question. So I'm Renee Mayby, and I know that you got an email today from me and from Marty Vanderpan. And thank you very much for reading our email and considering the comments that we made. I am here, and Marty is at another meeting. She may join us later. We're just very much in support of the request that the library has made to move forward with the seventeen. I will tell you that the process that the board has gone through, that Charlotte has gone through in terms of investigating this position, involve conversations at the state level, involve conversations with the resources that Charlotte has relative to what does this job description look like? What does it entail? What person can come in and hit the ground running? I will tell you that I investigated a lot of salary structures on OSHA, that when you go in there, I learned a lot, because you can look at a public services librarian, and you can look at salaries and expectations at the national level, at the state level, at the Northwest Minnesota level, and it breaks it down. And the issues with the public service librarian, for the credentials and for the job description and for the salary, the sixteen and the seventeen are on board. We had spent a lot of time talking with Carla, I think also Charlotte had talked with Carla, about, you know, what kind of things, what it looks like at a fourteen, what it looks like at a sixteen, what it looks like at a seventeen. And the board came away with the fourteen was certainly the least desirable level, because it doesn't allow the person to hit the ground running. Because having a library degree does, we like to think, certainly there can be people at all levels of employment that are very capable and some that are not very capable, but that a lot of other professionals require certifications and degrees and licenses and board examinations and credentials to assure that they can do the job well and efficiently. And certainly, some of the tasks that came out of the previous positions that have been eliminated wouldn't have required a library degree, but some of them that we are hoping to hire for will do better with the library degree. And so the board talked about sixteen or seventeen as being the board's preference. And I will be glad to address any questions. And, you know, I'm going to sidebar on a personal note here. My support for the library is because I'm on the board, and I see what they do, and I've used libraries all my life, and I know what a difference it has made for me personally and professionally. But that doesn't mean that I'm here to discount any of the other work that the city does. I like my nose cleaned off, and I like the clean water, and I like the sewer systems that work, and I like the park that's within walking distance of my house. And I just wanted to say thank you for all those things that I probably haven't said thank you for. But I also am here on behalf of the board and would hope that you would consider the full job description as you move forward. Do you have any questions?
I'll go back to my question again of how we advertise this, and that's why I'm bringing up the question. Can you advertise it with the pay scales? Or do you have to actually advertise it? Can you not have a range in there?
I think, may I ask, may I ask a question of you before this goes forward? Would that be okay? If the fourteen didn't require the library degree, that makes a huge difference in how you would advertise it and how your salary structure would look and who you would get applying for the job.
Be honest with you, I'm not even looking at the fourteen, personally. So that's, but so let's say we did, you wanted to hire somebody and you had sixteen and seventeen. Could you advertise it from the sixteen, one to seventeen, whatever, range? Or are we bound by having to advertise it at a certain dollar amount?
Well, you could, I guess the way to, the way to answer that is, the, how the position, we would need to advertise based on the, on the position description and what pay scale that position description fits into our pay rate, you know, as far as what grade that would be. I think it would, I really don't know how we would advertise a position that's graded seventeen with a range of sixteen, depending on like what kind of applicant we got. So we would have to advertise at the pay scale for the pay range of the, the pay rate that it's at, the pay grade that it's at. And in looking at this, I mean, I, I think what the council would, in my recommendation, would, would need to consider here is, yeah, looking at what, really what the need of the library is, what type of service they would be providing, and then go with the position that would require that. Because, you know, and then advertising for that, because if we would go to a fourteen, I, I'll just say, this is just a personal side, and I'll, I'll just make my recommendation. It's, in my experience, it's bad policy to, to try to write a position for a grade. It's better to look at what the need is in that particular department and then grade it from there and try to see where it, where it fits in in that. But it's, in just in my experience, it has not turned out well when we've tried to write a position for a grade.
Okay. What costs are incurred when we have to go back to regrade it? How much attorney fees do we have to pay?
It wouldn't be attorney's fees.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah, that would, we would go to the.
Springstead, whatever.
Yeah. I think we use.
Baker Tilly.
Yeah, Baker Tilly is what we use there. For, if you're going to regrade it, probably, I'd say maybe $1,500, $2,000, depending what it would be.
And I think some of that has been done, hasn't it, Charlotte, or not?
We have had, yeah, points or regraded twice. We have two different suggestions. They came from David Drown Associates.
Oh, okay.
But they haven't gone to civil service yet. So that would be the next step.
So I think what she's saying is that you could look at what's already been done and look at those, what they're pointing at now. Don't, don't you believe that?
Yep.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an additional cost to look at what the grades are, because they've already been done and paid for? So it'd be a matter of what that job description is.
You're not helping my point, because I was going down the road. If it's going to cost us money to repoint something, we're adding costs back already. We're trying to save money, so.
No, no, they've already been done. So we don't have to, we have that cost.
Yep.
We don't have that.
Charlotte.
But if you would have to, I, I see what you're saying, but if, if they would be making any changes, yeah, any kind of substantiation, yeah, you would have to have it repointed. And repointing, granted, I'm not trying to help your cause or hurt your cause here either, but, but repointing it is a lot, like, if you made a, like, if you make a small change, like a couple of job, job duty changes to a position description, it's less costly to have that relooked at than it is to have a whole new one looked at.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I would just add my perspective. I think we should move past this impasse, fill this position. To my ears, it sounds like sixteen is somewhere in between. Certainly, fourteen is, is not the right job category. And if the board is interested in sixteen or seventeen, I would, I'd be in favor of budgeting for a sixteen and then moving forward to fill the position at that level. Thank you.
Still seven in book. Mr. Better?
I'm still stuck on FTEs. So your full-time equivalents, are you including all the part-time people in there, too?
No, we only put full-time equivalents in there. So.
So they probably have seven actually full-time equivalents in there, then?
No, you said that you had one extra for volunteers, right?
We, not counting volunteer hours, it's, it's about six point four, six point three.
Full FTEs then?
If they fill all their hours with part-time people, yep.
So then, and all the departments, then we haven't included any of the part-time?
No, no, because like with parks, we, you know, we hire seventy-five people and.
Understand, I understand.
Yeah, so, you know, we just, yeah, it's something we can't keep.
When you tell them you have four time, full, four full-time equivalents, you actually have more than that. Now, I would like to see the actuals then with all part-times included in here, because then it makes a difference in how I look at the budget also.
So and on those, those documents, it's full-time employee positions is what that is, on every department?
It's not equivalents, then?
No.
Part-time are excluded.
Yeah. And I know when we fill out the forms with the state, they just say full-time employees. It's not even, they don't ask for equivalent. You know, we put the, the state budgets and stuff, but yes.
From my information and looking at budgets, I want to know full-time equivalents.
Okay, department heads, get to work.
I can get that.
And it's, you kind of need both, right? Because the full-time positions, you need to know how much they're getting in benefits and all those types of things.
Right. I mean, I mean, they could be, yeah, we haven't increased, we've had four, four full-time equivalents for the last four years, but we've gone from four part-times to nine part-time people.
Right.
Well, I guess the other thing is, is that, you know, and Charlotte could say that, but when, you know, if the hours are open, how many full-time employees need to be on staff? At least one, or do you have?
At least one.
Okay. So I think that's the bigger issue when she looks at hours and stuff. She has to make sure she has full-time employees with the part-time employees. And I think that's the same thing with a lot of other departments, too. I know, like at the rinks, right? We, there's always a full-time, usually a full-time employee at the rinks when the part-timers are, or some?
Not in the case.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I heard Charlotte say that when they do volunteers, they need a background check. Is that correct?
If, if they're working with children or youth, yes, they have to have a background check.
Okay. When I was in the, when I got drafted in the military, it cost, it cost the government $10,000 for my background check. What does it cost for yours?
I believe that it has gone up to forty. It was thirty-five for each person.
What kind of a background check can you get for $35?
I think Mike could answer that.
We're not allowed to do them for other employees.
Police Department, our access to records is very limited for anything in the criminal justice information system. We're not allowed to access that, to do that for other city employees and other city departments. So that has to be done through different private organizations, which is the fee that Charlotte's referring to. So if we could do it, we could do it at cost, but we're not allowed to by state statute.
And that goes through HR.
Yeah. And we do the same when we hire an employee that we have, we hire, we do a background check for any employee.
Where's that in the budget?
It actually is part of the HR, or it might even get charged to the department hiring. It's like a $40 fee, like you said.
Also, I wanted to touch, if I may, on Mr. Gallstead's job that he's got, that, that's everybody's thinking, well, that's a lot of money for, I'll tell you what, I wanted to thank him for the excellent job he does. And I know that the prosecuting attorneys are busy all over in, you know, Polk County. And now Polk County has come up with, they've, they shut down a wing of their prison, jail. Now, but I want to know what, what we're doing, what you're doing with the bad guys, if you can't put them in jail. You know, what's going on there?
Actually, there's just been some staffing issues. So there, right now, we're just beginning to deal with those issues. We haven't really had any discussions regarding it. I do know that, for instance, I was looking for one of my defendants today, and he was no longer in the jail. And I tried to figure out where he was, and they have him up in Pennington County right now. So they're, they're, they're kind of switching around and, and utilizing other, other facilities. So hopefully, it won't last that long, but it's basically a staffing issue at this point.
Well, I want you to keep the bad guys in there. Keep it up.
Thank you for your compliment, too.
Keep our city safe. Keep our city safe.
I'm going to join Brian and ask us to move on with the sixteen, move forward. I think we can live with that and hopefully she can live with that and get someone employed.
Why don't we bring both of those job descriptions to a vote and we can vote on it before the meeting?
You can do whatever you want, Mr. Demers.
Well, I'm just asking.
But I can tell you, I'll be voting for the sixteen.
You want to do it now?
So, can't.
Can't do it.
Mayor?
I'll, I'll join in and say I support sixteen. You know, we've, we've freed up Reed Hutton in, in our Parks Department to take off and go, come and ramping up out of COVID and getting back to good activities for our community. And we see the benefit of that in all of our programs that have taken off. Let's let our library do the same thing. Let's bring in the people we need and, and start to climb back out of it. I'll support the sixteen also.
Mr. Adams?
That was going to be my remark also. I'd support sixteen. I think Charlotte would, I think she can work with that. And I think we can keep a very aggressive and library moving and, and give the service to the people that they expect there.
Anybody else see anything? Anybody else see any questions on the budget?
Okay, if I can keep to you.
Go ahead. Do you want to let Mr. Demers finish with his stuff?
Go ahead if you've got something.
Mine's just very quick. I see in there the four thousand dollars for the street light. Is that stoplights or is that actual street light?
No, the LED lights that we've been replacing. Now, they're given to an age where some of them probably just need some little bit of repairs. And so like in 2019, we spent two hundred dollars on those repairs. Last year, we didn't, we didn't budget anything for twenty twenty-one because we didn't know about it. So now we're budgeting with a good estimate from the water and light linemen who actually changed them out, that please put four thousand in to replace lights that burn out.
So the water, the water and light department takes care of that, but it comes out of?
Yeah, because the street lights are city property.
Okay.
So they're our expense.
All I need, no, thank you.
Demers?
Thank you. Um, have we moved anywhere further on the infill building sale?
No, we're waiting for COVID.
Or listing, I guess.
I'm trying to figure what page.
Oh, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. Not yet. We've been waiting.
Could you turn, turn the mic on? Again, no, we've been waiting for the, to get through COVID so that we would have a proper price established.
But do we have, like, all of our background? We've done the?
The appraisal would have to be current, Mr. Demers, so with the appraisal will be done as we come out of here.
But we have, I guess where I'm going, do we have the agreements in place with our neighbors and all those type of things that would allow for us to move forward once we get an estimate, or a?
I know of no impediment. David, do you?
Yeah, as far as like the, any, any common area or anything like that, yeah, that, that has been addressed and we're able, yep.
So once, I think, you know, we're still subsidizing that building, you know, to seven or eight thousand dollars still a year. Be nice to get that off our books as well. I don't know, is that considered, is that something that we should anticipate moving forward in 2022, or are we?
Yes, we, I would expect that we would move forward next year. I would also point out, as I recall, the apparent, the paper losses because of the, um, yes.
Just not depreciation?
Okay. So that the, we actually cover our costs with the rents that we receive.
Okay. Then transit, we're maybe fifty thousand of the good for a conservative estimate on that?
Transit includes the bus purchase, which we know we won't get next year, so that's about seventeen thousand. We also have our P dollars that haven't been accounted for. We haven't written a grant for. I have to work with MINDOT to see if we can use those funds for local share of some things. If we can do that, that would reduce. However, with Minnesota having the surplus and with the Build Back Better dollars, they haven't figured out yet to what tune they're going to adjust the contracts, or if they will, or where that money will go. But I can guarantee you that the small urbans and our Transportation Alliance will be pushing for a better local match. Right now, our small rurals and our rurals are at a hundred percent. The state's paying a hundred percent. So I would like to think that maybe small urbans would get, instead of an eighty-twenty split, that we could see a ninety-ten, which they did in 2019. And then with our COVID dollars, I took care of all of the local match. So again, I, I push pretty hard for that contract to be done. I never want to say that it'll be changed because I don't want to be put on the hook for that. But every year that we do have surplus dollars or we have those funds available, they usually do change our contracts and go with a ten percent, ninety-ten, or I've seen some at ninety-five, five. A lot of things change, so I would say I wouldn't bank on our local match being a hundred ten. I would say at least half, if not zero, depending upon how I can spend my funds.
Right. And then while I have you, the one question about the building inspections, I don't think this is just because Mr. Peabody asked for more, but it goes up by thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, we were, we were looking to add rental inspections again, back into the program. We know we need to. Currently, Ron and I are working on a new rental ordinance. Obviously, revenue as to how those inspections will cost, how we get back into that, will be something that we're still working on, whether or not we're going to add the property management code. We got an estimate from In Depth of thirty-five thousand to do a, like a fourth of our totals.
So it would be on a four-year basis?
So it'd be on a four-year basis. We're still discussing, you know, again, what the revenue would be, what we would be charging per unit or how we would be charging.
So is that thirty-five thousand that covers the?
That would cover a year of, of contract, yes. We're not there yet, so I'm, I'm foreseeing it not being thirty-five thousand for next year, so.
Do we know, or we, we should know, what's the contract that we have with In Depth? How long is it? Are we, is it one year renewable, or is it multi-year, or?
It's, it's renewed every year provided that we don't request changes, which I think they get, they charge us for their time, which we reduce to nothing in the office. So they're not in the office, they're working solely out of their In Depth office. So those hours are, are gone. And then they get paid a certain portion of the permits and the plan review. So that has, that's probably dropped by a third, I would say.
It just would be a good idea, maybe to go, maybe we've been with them for seven, eight years now, maybe just get some additional quotes or if there's anybody else out there?
Yeah, I.
I guess I, I can, I can address that, and then I'll just, for the, I'll start with the apartment inspections. You know, that's something that we are, are looking at, this, that would be in addition to the building inspections. This is something that I don't believe we're going to be able to put off a whole lot longer. It's, it's, it's a, definitely protect the, the city as far as, I know with, we've worked with the fire department, and that was, so for the code inspections and that, it's, I, I think we're, it's sooner rather than later, we're going to have to adopt that to, to protect ourselves. So I guess with that being said, the, you know, in addition to the building inspections portion of it, I, I don't disagree for going out and looking at, and getting some other quotes or somebody that could do that. I will say, when we're looking for the apartment inspections and just what I know with talking with my colleagues over there, there's really two ways to go. Either you have an in-house building inspector, which we just do not have the volume to justify, or you contract with a building inspection company. And building inspection companies are disappearing. Few, there's fewer of them that are in the, in the position for a host of reasons. And if you, everybody is hiring a building inspector for, as far as the, the companies and the cities that have it, there are, everybody's looking for them. So I would agree, I mean, we certainly can, but I guess I, I would say we will do what we can to look at it, but I don't anticipate us really finding anybody else.
Well, I mean, at some point, like ninety thousand is what we're looking at budgeting right now. At what point does it become more feasible? I mean, what kind of, going back to this whole grade scale, like, is it, is that going to end up being something that we'd want to put on?
Well, we did start, and we've advertised no less than three times for a full-time building inspector, and nobody wants to do it, which is why we went with contracted position because they're doing it in a number of different cities. Whereas we just weren't getting the applicants for a full-time building inspector. What we are seeing, that I don't think we're far away from, is a lot of building inspections offices are combining with the fire departments because the majority of the building inspections have a lot to do with fire marshals, they have a lot to do with fire code. They're already doing commercial inspections, they're already doing daycare inspections, they're already doing, they have to be a part of the rental inspections. So we're starting to see those departments being morphed into, you know, building, a fire department having a full-time building inspector slash fire inspector that handles some of the fire marshal and, and things like that.
Well, and that's, that's maybe a good question for the chief too, is going forward is, you know, at that point, I mean, at a level sixteen, assistant chief is, you know, around eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars a year. That's just wages, you know, you tack on another fifteen probably wages and benefits. But at some point, is there a benefit to having, maybe, maybe how we've been doing it, you know, there's probably more people that would be interested in a fire marshal position than maybe a building inspector, you know? I don't know.
So when I started looking at our budget proposal for 2022, because of the rental inspection, the importance of that, I put in for a position. And I built a job description that was pointed at eighteen, grade eighteen.
And that's just a building inspector?
It would have been a deputy fire chief. And I looked at the times, I don't have them with me, but like forty percent of that time would be codes and inspections. I don't have those times, I can't quote them specifically, but I had it broke down. And then we got the, the quote from In Depth, and that kind of, we decided not to go with that.
I think it was like a savings of seventy thousand dollars.
Right, but I guess, to me, like four, once every four years is probably pushing it as well, you know?
It is, it is.
I mean, we should, it should probably, I mean, and this, this is the reason why we have these budget discussions, and it's important because as a city, we should have what our priorities is, you know, and I don't, I mean, to me, like, like Mr. Murphy said, like, if we aren't doing these inspections, we're face, not only is the city like facing some liability, like, we're just not doing our residents a service, right? And I think, just thinking about how we do this, I wish this would have come to us in October, you know, a little bit, you know, so we could really like mull over this a little bit. But, I mean, to me, I, I think that's a good, a better model maybe is, you know, in a couple, because like I said, if we're only going to get for ninety thousand, what's it going to cost us to do a one-year cycle? It's probably going to cost us a hundred and fifty thousand. You know what I mean? Like, so, and not that the, that person can do every rental in that forty percent time either, but I don't, I mean, I would bet that we could get a more efficient.
To, to do it, yeah, to do it more than every four years, that would require our, our contracted staff to have to hire another person. So we would be, you know, I mean, there, there are other people that they would have to hire, which obviously would make the contract, you know, go up. And we did look at that, and I believe we did, did we end up bringing it to a work session? Or was it just?
I thought we did, but I was gonna say.
I thought we did in September or August.
But going back, and I believe, correct my grammar, Nancy, but the, the every four years, that's the recommended timeline for that. We, we didn't just pull that number out. That's the, the recommended cycle for it was every four years.
In Grand Forks, our apartments are inspected every five years, and sometimes there's some slippage there. And when we say it's a four-year cycle, you don't hit them all on year one and then take three years off. You'll end up with a rotation, and that's also courtesy to landlords because it's a big deal. You know, if you have a thirty-two-plex that's inspected and they punch, you know, create a punch list of some GFIs here and some this and some that, it's a big, big undertaking to bring it back to what it should be. And you hope that the next group of properties maybe gets it the next year and then the year after that, just to create that proper rotation of, of doing the corrections that are recommended. So I think four years is a great, a great interval. In, in Grand Forks, it's five.
Well, in Grand Forks, sometimes it's thirty.
And yeah, sometimes we've had some that were seven or eight, but there, I think that was a, maybe a COVID thing too, because they're getting a little more stringent and more organized on that cycle, which, you know, we give them a little trouble for it, but really it is to the point that someone made, this is for the tenants. I mean, it's, sure enough, the city may have some liability, but if you have a, a property with multi-families in it and somebody's doing something very unsafe, you know, whether they're storing propane in there or stringing power cords or, you know, pulling too much current off of this or that, this is for the, the adjacent tenants and all the other families that live in there. And so I feel good about it. I think we should bring it back, and I think four is, is good.
And the chief would probably say the best way to put out a fire is before it ever happens, you know? And I think as, we should be as aggressive as we can to make sure that happens, you know?
Absolutely. When, when we started, when I started looking at that, that was the priority. Somehow get it so that our apartments were inspected on a four-year cycle. Now, being selfish, yeah, I'd like to see that in the fire department, absolutely. And I think we could, it would benefit our community in many ways when we started looking at that position. But looking at the dollar amount, it just, that's.
I'd just see more feasible.
And I think, and I, I'm fine. I guess, like I said, I'm glad we're having the discussion. I think we should, I'm fine with going ahead with the ninety thousand, you know, the increase to, to add the, the, the other properties. With the thing in mind is that it's definitely something we should put a pin in and track over the next three to five years, knowing that maybe the goal in five years is to add that position, you know? Because I can't imagine as we grow and as, you know, those contracts are, at some point, there's going to be a tipping point where it's going to be more feasible to have it in-house. And I, we just have it on our radar and keep it.
If I may add, just to that position of deputy fire chief, the numbers I had were sixty percent of that time would be used for apartment inspections and fire code, and thirty percent training, and ten percent administrative.
So was there a savings then because you could do training in-house?
No, what it would do, what it would do is it would free up our assistant chiefs now that do the training to be a second person with that inspector going into apartments.
Yeah, you can't, you, you have to send two. You can't just send one.
So it would free up the staff putting it there. And also it'd be more, there would be more continuity in our training, having one person there to be able to do it.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
I think, I guess in my final thoughts, just looking at kind of some of the items, you know, with, with the bus, kind of at that fifty thousand maybe plus savings, savings I came out on Friday, or today, I guess, potentially some savings in library position. I think, I mean, the way I have it penciled out, I mean, we're probably less than, probably around three hundred and seventy-five thousand, kind of when you pencil that all in, kind of off-budget budgeting. To me, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, I'm going to say that there's probably going to be some savings or some, we're going to be even higher than that on our revenues or less than that on our expenditures based on past trends. I'm fine with that number. I, I think it's going to come in. We're going to probably, I bet, or not bet, that's not a good, I would, I'm predicting that we'll be under two hundred thousand of deficits, deficits spending for, for 2022. And I'm fine with going ahead with a budget that, that's that. I mean, first of all, that, that doesn't even, that wouldn't put us below the fifty percent threshold even. So, I mean, technically, we could, we should, if we're going to stay with our same policy, we should probably be more aggressive with our cutting, but.
Why do you save your happy thought for the end?
I don't want to go against character.
Anybody else have any questions on the budget, or, for Carolyn? I see none.
So I just want to make sure I'm correct. I'll, I will upgrade the budget with the grade sixteen and get that out to you. And we'll vote on it on Tuesday. Correct?
That's what I took.
Thank you.
All right. Number four, we, discussion on redistricting and review of ward map options.
Just to review, we do our ward maps every ten years, based on what information we get from the census. Based on our charter, we want to make each ward as even as possible, or as equal as possible in population. And then the final information is, is that we base our ward maps on census blocks, and the census gives us those. They are defined by either streets and/or water, physical features. And so what I do every time I get the information from the census is we take our total population, we fill in those populations in each ward, and that was the first map that you had, and it shows the populations for each ward. I take that total population divided by five, we have five wards. Nothing difficult. It gives you approximately eighteen hundred and thirty-five people per ward. So as you can see from the first map, we need to adjust ward boundaries. So the north end, obviously, is going to grow further south as we move, because the majority of our population is in the south end. So as you can see, Ward one has more than eighteen thirty-five, same as Ward two. So we start adjusting. It was pretty easy to get wards three, four, and, and five adjusted, because it's very much a grid pattern, so we had smaller blocks to work with. So we did that, I did not provide you with those very small block changes, but what we try to do is we try to keep as much as possible your ward representation staying in those wards, however, that doesn't always come to pass. So what we have done is I have provided you with three different options and three different ward maps. Ward two being the one that has the three changes to it. The first option did move Clarence out of his ward. And part of that is because his block is such a large block, but it fits so well into the contiguous part of a ward, because that is also part of our city charter, as it states it has to be contiguous. They don't really want it to look snake-like in pattern, or look gerrymandered. So, so that was, that was our first option. That was kind of very low-hanging fruit. We did also provide two other options, because, again, one of our things that we don't want to do is we really do not want to pull a council member out of their ward if we don't have to. So if anybody has any questions, I could go into further detail, but I did provide the ward and the census blocks for the south end, so you could see exactly where we, we pulled from, and how we got those different ones. So one thing to keep in mind is that some of the blocks are quite large. In order to adjust them, we have to prove to the census that there is some way of providing a physical barrier, and we have to submit that after the census is done, so it wouldn't take an effect until after the two thousand thirty census. So, so it's, it's kind of a long process, it's very difficult to make those changes, you know, in the next year or two. But.
Mr. Jones?
Looking at the pictures here, and I understand what you're saying about the, the other three wards, but one, two, three, very confusing for the, for the residents in that ward to figure out where they're at. I mean, it'd be nice if we could just do a straight across, straight down type thing, you know, whatever. I understand what you're saying, but I don't, I don't know which one of these would be the simplest for, I understand the deal with Clarence also, I know, I know, I would work on that, that one. So between two, three here, though, the options is, I'm, I'm not thinking of myself, I'm thinking more of the residents, because sometimes you, you might be, you're, you're.
It has to.
Does it have to be totally equal type thing, I mean, or?
It, it has to go by census blocks. We can't take a half of a census block, because we don't know how the population splits out in that census block. So what we get is what we get. So if you look, let's just say, for example, the block, in fact, that Clarence lives in, it's a hundred and forty-three people. There's really no way to, to divide it somehow and get those numbers unless we, you know, unless we make that correction to the census, and they can figure that out, and then it's, you know, on a house-by-house basis. So we couldn't just split it in half and say, well, seventy people, you know, seventy-two are in this side, and seventy-one are the other, because that's, that's not definable. So we can only move the ward boundaries based on a specific census block. We cannot cut those in half. Trying to do it in more of a linear fashion, I mean, I have, I have looked this, looked at this in many, many different ways. Unfortunately, because of the point, and because of the populations there, we have to have more growth on the point for it to keep, you know, the, you know, either the south, you know, the, the point having two wards, and the north end having three wards, it just, population-wise, you know, it, it's just not feasible to just, you know, linearly cut it out. We have looked at numerous different ways.
I guess if I had my choice, I think, looking at it, I'm, I'm just thinking that option three is looking like maybe the simplest one to me. I think that if you, if you had to go that route, because.
The blue, the blue comes in quite a ways on option two.
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm saying, that way it could kind of stay, that, that area that Mr. Vedder then could kind of stay in, in contact, basically, you know? I, I just think that would be the best, in my opinion, but.
And for sure, I think.
I don't know if we have a chance, a, a choice of voting on it or what, but that's what I would recommend, or I would say I'd pick option three.
You're saying option three, where there's, actually, your ward would be to the south of his ward?
Yes.
Is that the one you're talking about? I just want to make sure on the right now if you're talking about.
Option one of, of redistricting a council person out of their ward, which should be avoided, if at all possible.
Right.
So I think three does look, the geometry looks simplest of the three, on three.
Although Mr. Vedder might do pretty good, might look pretty good in Ward two, but.
I, I think that's my hardest one. I think three looks like my hardest one.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because you're having citizens that are being in your ward would be to the south, would be farther south, where, I'm not saying I'm looking to get Clarence out of his ward, I'm saying that is more confusing for a citizen to say, well, I'm in, if you look at the block thirty-six, well, you would think, well, Clarence is my representative then, but no, it's actually Dale Helms.
Yeah. So are you saying that two maybe would be the better one, you think? Is that what you're getting at, or? I mean, I don't, personally, I'm just, like I said, it'd be nice if we could just square it off, and I know we can't do that, but, just make it, it'd be so much simpler. But anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Mr. Riedel, Mr. Johnson, I mean, everybody's got me.
I like option two. It takes that group that's way south and puts it back into Clarence's.
And there would be no way to pull off any bit of that blue in option two and tuck it back in?
What, blue?
What, green? Or the green, yeah.
He's an eye doctor.
It's a, hey, it's a blue green. It's a blue green.
You trace them, put these glasses on and trace them.
You know it's a blue-green.
It's green, it's green can be.
I'm kind of zoomed in on it, you know, I'm not seeing the blue around there.
Which?
So there would be no way to pull off any of that tip coming down Bigland Road back into the purple?
But you could, but you'd have to make it up somewhere else, and I think that's where the, the issue comes in. So if you, so if you would pull out that, like, say, like, that, cut it off, like, there on that.
That's why option three came into play.
Yes.
Yep, because you'd have to make it up somewhere else. And, you know, the, and, so, yeah, either you take that block that, that the current council member is in, or you got to try to make up those numbers on the south end there somewhere, because you really shouldn't be crossing that river coming in from the north. So you'd have, so that's where option three came in, it was really kind of the, to make up the numbers, to make them all even. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a, kind of goofy deal, so, yeah.
Better, he has a comment?
Well, I'm just looking at, like, I'm picking it's James or maybe it's Maricord, not Maricord, but that one block has two hundred and fifty-seven people. And it crosses the Coolie, didn't it? The Coolie being, like, the bargain.
Yeah, that's, that's how the census, that's how they did their block. And we actually cut it in half, because the thirty-three, we, we had provided them a couple of suggestions after the two thousand ten, and this is the one they took, because the Riverview Lane property was not developed at the time. So we provided them suggestions, the census takes what they want, and that's the blocks that we have. So, so that, that two hundred and sixty-seven one absolutely will be a request for a change in the next one, but according to the census and, and the redistricting, the state, you know, that's what we're stuck with.
Yeah, it doesn't take effect until after the next one.
Yep, yep. Because I did look into that, so.
Ten years.
I'm finally, I want to be option.
You're looking for the option one, is that what you're saying? Just for knowledge, anyway, what happens, let's say that we were, had to pick option one, and let's say, or, let's say it's no matter what ward you're in, and we got changed, and the council member was out of his dis, his ward. Do they have the option or to run, because, because he's off-center, so say Dale's, he's what, in two years?
Yes. Well, this year, twenty twenty-two.
This year, twenty-two, and Clarence isn't running until twenty-three, it'd be twenty-four. So would he have to automatically go back?
We, we did look that up, and we reviewed it in the charter, Ron and I visited about it. How it works is that he would have a couple of different options. He could either, if, if we adopt the ward now map with option one being that one, he could rescind a spot and run in two thousand twenty-two against Dale. He could stay on until two thousand twenty-four, at which time he would not be able to run for that ward, but then could turn around and run again in two thousand twenty-six. So.
Or he could run it for the at-large in two thousand twenty-four.
Or he could run for an at-large, yes. So those were the three options.
Mayor.
Sounds like an option to get rid of one of us, Clarence.
Okay, really, I mean, if you could rid both of us, we'd just move.
Yeah.
Three or whatever.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that was, I mean, when you started moving around, we wanted to, we wanted to move ward or council members as little as possible based on, on the blocks. It was easier to work around Dale. Unfortunately, the blocks on the south end were much larger, with much more populations. So it was harder to kind of meander our way through that.
To make up the difference in, that you did, to, so that, so that they were all even.
Yeah.
So is that the deal, then? We have to decide or make the motion on which option we want? Is that, and then vote on that? Is that what you're looking for? Or?
Yeah, yes, and we do have some time, because we cannot adopt our ward map until the state does their redistricting, and, and then the county, and we, we haven't received any of that yet. We have to adopt it before March, the end of March. But, so we, we do have some time. I just wanted to present it to you, just so you had a chance to look at it.
Do we have any sense from preliminary state maps or county, like, if there would be any change to the, because now, like, even Ward two pretend is split into two county districts, correct?
Yep. No, we have, I have not received anything, unless, Megan, you have seen anything? No, we, we've received nothing. And usually, they kind of spring it on us at the end of February, so.
Well, I know in two thousand ten, we didn't decide till probably February or March, or March, probably.
I think we approved it March nineteenth, I think it was, so, so it was ve, very close to the end. So we kind of had the maps ready.
Right.
And that's where we're at again. I mean, if we were to get a sense of even, like, representatives, or if any of that changed, you know, that might affect our map, I, I doubt it will, just because of the way our population, you know, because we're growing to the south.
Well, I guess, in my opinion, the most contiguous, and if you take all the personalities out of it, option one is like the, the best option. Like, I'm not trying, like I said, I'm not against either of you or anybody, but it makes the most sense from a contiguous continuity and kind of area where people kind of would make logical decisions, or logical, like, brake lines, to your point about making it as square and cut-off as possible. Obviously, that causes some people heartache, or whatever, or having to make decisions based on their thing. It's, you know, I don't want to make a bad decision that is going to affect us going forward either, because either person could resign, or choose not to go, or whatever, and then you'd have a map that all of a sudden might look a little bit crazier, and you're saying, why do we have this map here without this person here? And now we're, I mean, it's a quick cycle, I guess, in the grand scheme of things, ten years, but, you know, how would this affect, you know, anybody else looking to run as well? You know, I mean, obviously, you should, there's two different ways of thinking of it. It's the seat that you're in, and you should, you've ran for that seat, and you've represented those people. But that, that's going to change anyway, right? Like, the people you represent based on this. The other is, is that it's not really that person's seat, it's the city's seat, and you represent that area. So, like I said, I, my first option would be option one, but if we're going to defer to, you know, making sure that people are safe, I would say option two is the best. Option three just looks crazy.
One of the reasons not to redistrict someone out of office is that, from an administrative point, you could take out someone you didn't want on, and that would just be wrong, right? So that's, you know, that happens at the state and national level all the time, they're doing maps to try to manipulate outcomes, and we're just not going to, we're not going to be part of that.
But you're also making a decision about who doesn't get to run as well.
Well, anybody can run, anybody can run.
Right, but if you're, I, what I'm saying is, is if you make it as contiguous and as straightforward as possible, process, you're not advantaging anyone.
Well, you are disadvantaging someone who, who currently holds that seat.
Right, but.
So I guess.
What if, what would have happened if, you know, three hundred more people would have been, you know, moved in on the east side of Bigland? You probably would have had a different, different thing, and you would have had, I'm just taking it to example, like, all of a sudden, you'd have to make some little, like, peninsula out to grab this one person. At some point, you have to find the, the happy medium. Yeah, you don't represent that area anymore. And, like I said, I'm, I'm not saying that that's, it would be, I think option one is the best option. Yep, but I'm fine with option two, if, if that's what we want to do.
Anybody else have any input, comments? I think we'll.
You know, and I did, I did provide you with the census blocks, so, you know, we, we don't have to make a decision even next Tuesday. We can move it into January, you know, and re-discuss it, but you have those blocks and those numbers there. So it, you know, there, there could be other options that you might see that I haven't, and I'm more than, I'm more than comfortable with you providing those, and we can make those new maps as well. So that's, that's why I did provide those south end maps. The north end really just, it, it wasn't too hard to, to, to make those changes. The north end really just, it wasn't too hard to make those changes because of, we have such good blocks up there, you know, smaller blocks, because the roads are in a grid pattern. This one was just more difficult, and again, like I said, you have the numbers, and we're not in any hurry, so this does give you guys the opportunities to look at it as well, and maybe you can come up with some options that are different, so. And we can bring this back in January, but if you don't have the information now, we're further behind, so.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, discussion on recreation facility projects and potential local option sales tax. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Just, I'll briefly just kind of summarize the community open houses that we've had through the month of September. I included that all in your council packet with some of the feedback and results from surveys we had, and then we can talk about sales tax. The open houses we had, we had three of them in November, first one November 9th, a second on November 16th, and the third on November 30th. Participation in those open houses, I thought, was strong. We planned them purposely, the first two at each of the ice arenas on evenings that we knew we had activities happening. So there was a lot of foot traffic already coming through the doors at those arenas on those evenings. I would bet between the couple of evenings, we didn't take a head count, but I would bet we had 500 or 600 people come through and stop and look at the blown-up pictures, the concept plans that we shared with all of you at the council meeting last week in September. The general, I think the general sense and feeling at those open houses was positive. People were really excited to be able to see the blown-up concept plans and get an idea of kind of what we're discussing and what's come together from the building committee's work. There was some really great feedback received, even some really just probably minute design considerations, but some things with parking and access to the buildings that people that use them every single day see that they included, that I think will be valuable to us going forward. And then the third one was here at City Hall. That one, expectedly, was less attendance. I would bet through that evening, that hour and a half, we probably had eight to 12 people come through, not nearly as many. The nice thing about that one is that the people that did come came specifically for that. They wanted to come and see the plans and to look at them and ask questions and give feedback, so I think it was all valuable. The survey responses, we had a Survey Monkey that was online. When people came to the open forums, they got a postcard handed to them that they could take home with them that had the link to the survey. Unfortunately, that did not get nearly the response that I would have hoped it would have. We had 38 total responses to that survey. By comparison, the two surveys we had online in the summer of 2020, in June and in April, I think total in those two ballpark, we had 650, 700 responses. So we sent it out all the same ways, we shared it with people in all the same formats, we just, for whatever reason, didn't get as many people to respond to it. So what that means for the project, I wouldn't say that that means that people are not excited about it. Again, the general feedback that we had with people coming to the arenas and seeing it, the general, people that have their kids in these winter programs specifically, because that's the season we're in right now, I think are aware of it and are really excited about the potential for the projects, and seem that, for the most part, seem to be really on board with the way that they're presented and the kind of the plans that, they seem to hit the need in the, in the community for what the arenas want going forward. So that, I think, is great, that feedback, the sales tax discussion, that piece of it. There was a question in the surveys that asked people a yes or no question if they were in support of a local sales tax increase to pay for a portion of the projects. The first question was if they were in support of a 1.5% sales tax. That question, 30, I got to get back to it. Total of all of the questions, 31 of the 38 people that responded said yes, they supported a sales tax increase. The 1.5%, 28 of the 38 said yes to that. And then if someone answered no to that question, it brought them to a 1.25% sales tax, a yes or no. If they answered no to 1.25, it brought them to a 1% sales tax to choose from down the line. We started in that order, just, obviously, I think the obvious is that the higher sales tax percent rate brings in more revenue over the course of the term that we're looking at. So those are kind of the small sample size results we're looking at with those surveys. The sales tax scenarios in that discussion and how they align with the plans we have, we used the sales tax average monthly revenue off of our 1% increase that we had in place when we had the swimming pool project. So that average, over the almost three years the sales tax was in place, that average tax increase or revenue was about $85,000 a month. So that was our baseline for what we did with revenue, $85,000 a month in sales tax revenue, yep. So that was the baseline we used at the 1%. We took that number and multiplied it to get to what we would expect our revenue to be if it was 1.25% and 1.5%. In asking Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, to put these scenarios together, they're similar to what they were a couple of years ago when we talked about this topic, we asked for them to look at what the total projected funds collected off of a sales tax would be over a set number of years. On a 1%, in the presentation, this information is here, the table provided is what Baker Tilly provided to us. I don't have pages on mine, Mark, if you have what page it's on. On page 116?
60.
160, if you're looking at it, the sales tax scenarios. The 1% sales tax increase, we looked at that over a 20-year term, recognizing that if it goes longer than 20 years, we could certainly collect for longer statutorily than that, but we're going to start to pay more in interest on a project over a bond at that rate than we would have, than we would be spending towards actual project construction at a 1%. The other two scenarios, we extended that term out to 30 years. Statutorily, again, if we look at a sales tax increase for projects of this nature, we can institute with voter approval the tax for 30 years, or when the project is paid for, the dollar amount that we've set by the ballot question is paid in full. Those would be basically the two options. So when you look at this table, just looking at potential funds to be collected, so everyone knows how to read it and look at it properly, I touched on the term length, years, total funds collected, that would be the column, that's the fifth line down, that would be the total dollar amount collected on the tax. The line below that, total projected interest paid, that's Baker Tilly's projection. If we were going to take a bond out on a 19 and a half million dollar project, how much would go towards interest paid? And then the seventh line, project funds, that's the bolded line, that's the estimate of how many funds would be available for construction on these improvement projects based off of each one of those tax increases. For, just for your sake, so it's kind of all in one place, I gave a few examples of what some other communities in Minnesota have for current sales tax rates. Those are today's rates. That does not include, some of those communities are pursuing local option sales taxes at this upcoming November 22 election as well. It does not include what their proposed rate increase is, it's what it currently is today. Summary, just on, from the League of Minnesota Cities, on other communities in Minnesota that are pursuing this, in, at the 2021 legislative session, there were 20 Minnesota communities that received approval to vote for a sales tax increase for projects of this nature, and the League of Minnesota Cities has had some correspondence with 12 others this year in addition to my early correspondence with them that are looking to consider it for this year. So just kind of a sample size of what's happening across Minnesota. We're not alone, I would say, in that, with that, in that, I think all communities in Minnesota have these similar facility plans or issues that need to be addressed, funding, you know, funding resources that need to be found, and that sales tax is a way to find that. So we're not alone in that regard in having this conversation across the state. As far as a direction or recommendation, at this point, I don't have any specific recommendation for you. I'm open to questions and want to hear feedback from all of you on the project that we presented last week in September, any feedback you've received across the community. Of course, I want to see the projects happen. I think that the projects are the best foot forward for our community and for the department as a whole, to really set these facilities up for the long term, so, you know, the rate that gets us the closest to that is the one that I like, you know, internally in the department, but we need to do what's right, what rate fits best with what the community wants to see, and that's kind of where I stand today.
Maybe else touch, just based on the process, quick, that when we have to have something down to St. Paul, just so everybody knows that, hey, you're not asking us to go, okay, this is what we want, but we also do have a timeline that we can't say, well, let's keep discussing this next month or the month after that. We don't have that, though.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate that. I breezed over it, but the process for, the next steps for us going forward, if we want to pursue a local sales tax for this project, our proposal needs to be delivered to the tax committees at the State Legislature House and Senate by January 31st, 2022, so in six weeks. That's really the timeframe we have to make a determination. In order to do that, we need a resolution of support that tells the legislature what tax rate we're pursuing, what the projects are going to be on the ballot that we would vote for, and the term or the dollar amount that we are pursuing within that tax. So whatever, whatever dollar amount or length of years that we would approve the tax to be collected for, should it be approved by our voters. That process, then, there's some other supporting material that I would provide to go along with that. I need to provide a document to the legislature that shares the regional significance of the programs or the projects we would be doing, some economic impact of how it impacts the community, and then ultimately, we would, in some form, be invited to present those plans to the tax committees for approval at this legislative session. With approval, then, we would, after approval from the legislative session, it would come back to our city council to approve ballot questions by the end of August 2022, so that it could be on the November general election.
So given the timelines that we do have, six weeks, Mr. Murphy, I guess, in our timelines for meetings that we have, hey, we always have the option of having a special meeting too, but given the time for work sessions and stuff, discussions, when do you think, I don't have a calendar in front of me, I haven't pulled one up, with our next meetings, maybe Megan has that ahead of us, when we have to make a decision to make sure that we have a final vote of where we're going to go for a resolution?
I see Mr. Larson just pulled up his calendar here. I would think if we could have it, I would say, just in case there's any questions, any feedback, those kinds of things, if we could, if we could, I would try to say our first city council meeting in January. Just because, yeah, I mean, if, we'd rather have, I'd hate to have it, say, you have to make a decision at that point, and, you know. So I'd say the first one in January, which is January 4th, and that would give us then the option of, you know, if any further research, to do the final vote at January 18th, if necessary.
January 4th, the work session?
Fourth is organizational.
Organizational.
We can do something like that.
Yes, but it's a business item.
Amendments on the fly either, I've done that before. We did that last time.
Are you expecting we'd bring it to a vote before we have it at another work session? Or would we try to discuss it somewhere between now and then and have a vote on that day?
That's what I'm trying to figure out timelines, so we're not.
Want to have a work session on January 28? That was the question that was going to be asked anyway, so typically, we don't have the last work session of the year.
Not in December, not January 28.
Yeah, December 28, yeah. In between, beginning of Christmas and New Year's.
So would you want to bring us back to that work session for further discussion?
It's fine with meeting.
I don't have a problem with that, because it's something that we need to take care of, make sure we walk through this properly and take care of. It's not something we can just whip together and, because with your getting the direction from us, you're going to have to put everything together. You just can't go back to the, and put everything together, print it out.
We could have a work session with just that item on it. Take the time we need. Because this one does need some, some careful deliberation. It sure does.
Because now that we're hearing, you know, having this in front of us, people are hearing this, you know, 1, 1.25, 1.5, I mean, we're going to get some feedback here, and I think that's what we need to have from the citizens more. I know you guys have been working very diligently getting that in the past couple of months, but I think it's getting down to a point where we have to make sure that we're doing what's correct, we're doing what is needed, and gives you time to make sure you put it together so you're prepared when we go down there, and when we go down there, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you clarify the stuff on the current local sales tax rates in Minnesota? Now, it says those are what they are currently, right? And are all of those that are listed looking for local option sales tax? I know Hermantown was down when we were there. Which ones are?
So those don't reference specifically that they're pursuing a local sales tax. I just cherry picked communities to get tax rates, just so people understand how East Grand Forks compares to other communities in Minnesota. Of those that are listed that way, the ones that I know that are pursuing sales tax, I don't know what percent each of these are, but Moorhead has approval to vote for a sales tax increase next year. Hermantown has approval to vote for a sales tax increase. I think that's it of the couple that are typed out there.
I know when we were down in St. Paul, Hermantown was down there at the same time.
Yeah.
I know when we passed our resolution, Moorhead had some ungodly crazy, like, $70 million thing or whatever.
Aquatic Center and City Hall improvements, yeah.
They had a giant deal. So I guess, I mean, it would be interesting to see what other local sales option rates are going to be, if we can, for the next work session, to try to figure out what's being asked and then what their current rates are as well, if that's something we could, we, as in you.
Yeah, I can, I can ask and see if I can find that. I have the publication that showed what communities got approval. It didn't include their tax rates, but I can do a little further digging and see if we can find that from the league.
And I'm sure they're going to go through this process again as us, and, because ours is 1% last time.
Yeah. There were 20 last year that received legislative approval, so they're on the ballot for next November.
Okay.
That includes Moorhead and Hermantown. They don't need to go through the city council process again this year. They did it a year ago in our set.
Reed, if I could also, for the work session coming up, take a look at, what's the durable lifespan of the things that we're purchasing? Is it 20 years, is it 30 years? If it's not 30 years, then we shouldn't finance it over 30 years, right? So I'd like to have a sense of the breakdown of the project, how much of the asset that we're purchasing has a lifespan into that 30-year range?
If we go by the current stuff, all of it.
How about turf? Turf won't go 30 years.
Well, we've made turf, and all that stuff goes longer.
You put a certain name on it, it might go longer.
Yeah.
Mr. Larson?
Question for you, Reed, on the legislative approval process. Can you clarify, if we, say, went forward with 1.5% as a max, could that end up getting cut back through negotiation or feedback with our lawmakers down to, say, 1%? Or if we go in with that 1.5, that's what we want to do, and that, it's that or nothing?
My feeling on that question is that whatever we send at the end of January is what our decision is, and we stick with it. The process two years ago, you, if you'll recall that, we started at a 2% tax increase, and then, Reed, we basically passed a new resolution at 1% and brought a 1% increase to St. Paul. So it's been, I don't know that anyone else has ever attempted to do that. We did, but I wouldn't say that that's the way that they want to see the process work. I think, and we would, it wouldn't look good, I think, as a community on our part, going down there and then doing that again. The message when we went was, don't bring 2% back, figure out what you want in the time you have, and come back with a better plan, you know, and that was part of what our process has been from that day forward, is that's why we did the community engagement we did, that's why we formed the building committee, that's why we put these conceptual plans together, all in an effort to be able to bring a more polished plan back to St. Paul if we went back again.
I agree. I think if you come, if we're going to pitch, we better know what our pitch is. is.
Mr. Turevener?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the cities that I'd like to see would be Grand Forks, because we're so close. Even with the 1%, we're going to be higher than what Grand Forks is already. But I'm not sure if Grand Forks is looking at a sales tax increase.
Grand Forks County is.
Grand Forks County.
Well, they're looking to go home room charter, or rural charter, not home room, so that they can, well, it's not the reason why they want to do it, but it's the reason why they want to do it.
The other thing that you're looking, that we're missing in here, is there's no inflation adjustments in any year figures. So just because we're getting to $85,000 a month in the past one, with inflation, by the time you hit your 20-year, you're going to get a lot more than $85,000. So even, I'm going to stick with the 1%. I'm not in favor of 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2, because I think with the 1%, if you go 20 years or 30 years, I think you're still going to get enough collected to meet the project bond payments. That's where I'm at.
But like, you're, with the 1%, with the number, all you're really picking is the cap. I agree with your comment about the inflation, but all that happens, if you say you do a 1 and 1/2%, all you're going to do is shorten that term. You're going to end up hitting your cap at 15 years.
Sooner, yes.
Right.
But at 1 and 1/2, I don't think our retail sector can swallow that 1 and 1/2% sales tax.
That's a, I mean, that's a question to have, or whatever. But I don't think, like I said, I would just say, the inflation problem isn't really about, it's really about the length of the term, because you have to set your cap of how long, like, you know what I mean? Like, even at 1%, say you want, say you're going to do a $20 million project, if you set that 1%, even though you start gating more money, you're never going to collect that 20 million, because you're going to be, well, you'll collect 20 million, I'm saying, of principle, you're never going to collect that 20 million, even though you start inflating that cost, because you've already set your cap at 15. Because you have to set the maximum amount of dollars that you can pick.
Are you not going to set the maximum at what your project cost is?
Right. But I'm just saying, like, I guess we're just coming at it from two different perspectives. Like, I would rather set it, I want a bigger project, and I just think it's going to be paid off quicker than that 30 years because of inflation.
And we can have that conversation in the end of the month.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm looking forward to it.
Do you guys want to say?
Yes, I do.
We still have another topic.
Yep, we sure do. But it's all good. It's important.
Oh, I think I have some direction for now.
Wonderful. Thanks. Move on to number six, maybe stall a little bit for the mayor. Consider Bigland, Reinhart Drive, roundabout options.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. I guess since, you know, you, the council, have kind of decided now we're going to move ahead, pursuing the potential roundabout at Bigland and Reinhart for our 2023 project, thought it was important, again, that we just kind of bring forward, you know, the four options that I think we had previously prevented or presented, which, you know, basically, at this point, been put together by Alliant Engineering. Again, just as a background, Alliant Engineering is the one that had completed the Bigland corridor study, recommended the roundabout at that intersection, or recommended as an option. So, again, just wanted to, you know, have some discussion, review the, you know, the four options again. So, again, right now, like, option 1A, again, that option, you know, now when you look at it, would require basically potential property acquisition from two different parcels there, that are shown basically in the hatching there. You got the one just on the east side of Bigland. And then you got the one kind of on the south side of Bigland and Reinhart, kind of, you know, the intersection or just on the south side, you have some potential property acquisition there. This option would provide for basically a full access intersection at Bigland and Fifth there, would kind of, you know, do some reconfiguration there, just to kind of bring Fifth more into a 90-degree intersection there. This option, as you can kind of see there, access onto Reinhart from Ortons, you know, would basically be more or less in the current location with kind of an opening in the median there. You know, just see some potential issues with that, you know, larger buses, maybe, you know, like a semi leaving Ortons. I think, you know, they could accommodate that. I think their back tires are going to, you know, track up onto that island. But that, I mean, it is doable. Option 2A, let's see, I'm sorry, option 1B. That one, again, that one would potentially require property acquisition from three different parcels there. Basically, you have the two parcels that we previously discussed, and then what they weren't showing on the drawing, and I kind of highlighted it there, is the access from Ortons onto Reinhart would basically get reconfigured, requiring some property acquisition there, just south of Thornton Station. That option 2, right now, that one is showing more of a, kind of a 3/4 access. You wouldn't be able to, from Fifth, make a left out into Bigland. But again, you know, that one, this option 2, you know, you could reconfigure the intersection of Bigland and Fifth to have a full access there. But again, you know, potentially property acquisition from three different parcels. Option 2A, you know, that one now, you know, what's currently shown, that one may not require any property acquisition. However, you know, personally, just the way they're showing, from Ortons on to Reinhart, they're kind of just showing a raised surmountable island, almost like you could drive over that island when the access, or to get out of there. But I put a big X no on that one. I don't like that one at all. I just, I don't think anyone would like that. And then option 2B, that one would basically require property acquisition from one property there, you know, again, just straight south of Ortons. Again, that one, right now, they're showing at Fifth and Bigland, they're showing kind of just that 3/4 access. Again, I see no reason right now why that one couldn't be a full access either. So again, just wanted to have some initial discussion with you, see if you guys have any input as far as, you know, maybe one or two of these options, just again, because we're going to have to start, you know, visiting with property owners and such about, you know, property acquisition, that type of stuff. So just wanted to bring it forward, kind of a little bit of a refresher too, of where we were kind of at.
Question on 2B option, for the lot that the Ortons access would now go through. Has anyone contacted the owner of that lot, just willing buyer, willing seller, to say, you know, is that lot for sale, and at what price? You know, just a casual first contact about that?
No, we have not. And I guess the reason for that would be, is it'd be a little bit presumptuous at that point. You know, if we're looking at this particular configuration, then it would be much more appropriate, and at this point, moving forward to speak to them about that. And I guess I can speak a little bit about property acquisition. It's always best, you know, if we can work out where it'd be a willing sale for that. And I did, but I did look at that particular property. It is vacant. It has been vacant for, you know, forever. It's been that way in a long time. I did look up at what it is assessed for in the county assessor's office. So I guess, of the scenarios that are presented, if we're going to need to acquire property, this is probably our best scenario, because again, it's not a residential, it's not an occupied residential property. You know, so I guess I would be, I would not be very apprehensive about going through the property acquisition process on that particular piece. And I think it would be a fairly straightforward process. And I, just based on what I seen, it probably would not, I would anticipate it was not going to be an overly expensive piece to acquire in the grand scheme of things, compared to, like, say, taking something from an occupied property.
Question I do have in regards to that also, two parcels are, I'm assuming, are owned by the same person who make the lots.
They are.
My question would be, with the, let's say, possible scenario, to say if we did go this route, with the usage of basically half of that lot to move Ortons entry exit there, would that make the parcel unbuildable and useless to that owner?
Okay, that's a very good point, very good question. I guess what I would say is, looking at the lot that's shaded yellow, based on how that would be, is if that, for an access like that, you would, we would have to almost convey to a certain point before it'd be like a private drive. So, you know, rather than, say, a city street or something where we'd plow that. So if we were going to acquire that, and we would be working with Ortons, and most likely would be, some sort of scenario would be maybe turned over for a private drive, that type of thing. So with that being said, most likely, the best scenario, what I would recommend, is that we would acquire that, go through the process to acquire that entire lot. Because then the remaining lot on that would really be inaccessible to any kind of public street, other than the alley in the back. So.
I understand that parcel. I'm talking about the second parcel that's the south of that.
That one.
What requirements or things that would be put in place? Because let's, you're going to have to move the Ortons access. Is there going to be anything that's going to deter from anything being built on that second parcel that's to the south there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Or entryway, if you were to have, ask, can I put a driveway here this close to his entryway? Is, are we going to have issues with that?
I'm going to put Nancy on the spot here. Do you know, would that be a requirement, would there be?
I'm saying is that if this is the scenario that gets, moves forward, this parcel here, would there be anything that we would prevent this person building anything on it and having access from this road then, because it's too close to this entry?
No.
Okay.
It would come down to their development plans. I mean, if they had a development in, on the books, that they were planning to build on that whole thing, they'd have to change it, of course.
Yeah, but like, I think Mark's right. Like, our access management plan would require some distance.
And I'm not sure what the access management is on Reinhart. I don't have it in front of me.
I'd be, it's something to look at, obviously.
I'd, I would like to know the answer to it, because that's going to determine, well, if you're going to do that, he might as well buy a second parcel from him, because you're deeming me not be able to build there anyway.
Or you could share the access. You could tee off right as you came on to both parcels.
You also have, you could also share the access with Senior Citizens Center. But we haven't, you know, Reinhart, every property that faces Reinhart has their own access. So we'd be hard pressed to say, you can't have an access.
And to the south of that, you have the access to Senior Centers. So I mean, you're, you're.
Yep, yep.
Right. But it makes sense, I think, as we move forward, even if there isn't a strong access management plan along Reinhart, we should probably make sure that we have one as that becomes a more of a corridor. Like, I could just see, I think Mark's in some ways right, like, coming in and out of a roundabout, you don't want to have three separate entrances that people are coming, you know, trying to in, in US and out US. I'd be in favor of buying both properties if we could acquire them. So, but.
And then we could look at that, the assessed value, neither one of them are very high-dollar, high-dollar properties. So it depends what the appraisal will come back at. But I don't anticipate either one of them being prohibitively expensive to acquire.
And again, we have access management for residential. That's what our access management is typically. It's not for commercial properties. So.
And these are zone commercials?
Is that true?
I would assume so.
Okay. I don't know off the top of my head, but I guess.
I mean, if Orton's access point would be to that, that would be a commercial property. So, you know.
Okay. Mr. Alms, you had something, sir?
Yeah, I'd just like to have a verification on the vote that was done last week. I thought the vote was for going ahead with the idea of getting an actual cost of this project, and not actually doing this project in '23. I thought we were just looking for a cost to get, find out the final cost of it.
We need to make sure what's, we're going to do here, so we can move forward to get that cost. So we need to look at how it's going to be laid out, which option we want. So then Mr. Emery has the information of knowing how he can, what the design is, and then so we know if there's property to acquire.
Hey, because I want to be sure of what we're doing here, so when I vote, I know what I'm voting for.
And both projects are still going ahead into the planning stages further, both of them, 10th and this.
Yeah. And I guess if that's, so correctly, while I put this out, so if the council votes and picks kind of an option, then I guess at that point, my, the way I would take it then is, that's a scenario that was picked out, so it would, I would be then authorized, or it would be prudent to start contacting the property owners to start seeing what the willingness for acquisition is. And I would suggest that I would most like, I would contact Ortons as well, to see what their long-term plan, and have them look at this and see if they have any issues with the access. So.
And I'd be happy to be part of the conversation with Ortons. We've spoken already. And they're eager to know what our plan would be if we were to go, because it'll guide their development, even of their site, based on how they're going to be able to access it.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any, like, requirements for residential access on the legs of a roundabout? And I guess, to be more specific, I'm talking about the properties on the east side of it. Appears that there's probably three, maybe four residential access that access right onto Bigland right now. I would just wonder, is, would that be allowed? Are we looking at different property acquisition to try to, you know, force that to the, to the rear access? You know, I would imagine it's not an easy task right now to back out onto Bigland at certain times of the day. I don't know what that would look like with the roundabout for those three to four properties.
Yeah, the, I mean, the biggest, you know, the biggest thing is if, you know, if they wanted to come out of their driveway and go south, you know, they're going to have to basically kind of go, come out, go north, almost make like a U-turn there, and then, you know, head back south or whatever. But.
Well, the, and the properties to the north of the roundabout would have to basically make a U-turn on that island.
Right.
Or just take the roundabout.
But they wouldn't be able to get to the roundabout.
No, no.
They'd have to either do that, or go all the way around the block the other way.
That would be a good thing, I guess, maybe to look at the MUTCD, or contact the state, you know, residential access onto a roundabout. I know that Grand Forks, the apartments, the apartments do access right into the roundabout. So I know that there is some residential, but I don't know if it's dependent on individual residences or not.
Well, they have the advantage of coming from a parking lot, right?
Correct. Yeah, so they can turn around. That's, that's what I'm saying. You know, I guess residents defining, it's different for a single residence versus a multifamily. We do currently have access management standards on Bigland. No one will get a private residence access onto Bigland anymore. And that's why we have the alleyways, and that's why And that's why we have the alleyways and that's why a majority of the people do access. But if your garage is facing Bigland.
Right, well, that's, I guess.
You're, you're asking someone to build a garage then on the back and, you know, access. I mean, because people do like storing their cars in garages. That makes perfect sense, so.
I guess my point is as we flesh this out, those are real issues for people.
So, so that, that would be something that you would want to consider, yep.
If that doesn't meet, I could see the, the one south of the roundabout, the one, I guess is, that's south of the roundabout. That one doesn't seem to be as bad of a deal because really it's just a back out into actually better traffic for them. And then you could go out, spin around a roundabout, you're going south. What's it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I didn't see that one on this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess the thought was, is if those aren't going to be feasible, like you have to factor in either a, trying to figure out a reconstruction of a garage or whatever to figure out what's the best fit.
And I think, yeah, I mean, I think in the process, all of these people that are potentially affected by this, you know, maybe not through property acquisition, whatever, but I think we're going to have to, you know, have those discussions with them and how.
I, I do know who I.
How this project would impact them.
I, I do, I do have a person that in mind and who I will contact and get their opinion on whether or not they may would have some sort of, you know, legal objection to this or something along.
Well, like I said, I just, I mean, there's about, like, I forgot about that one on the, on the west side.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, there's probably four or five properties that would be affected for access. So we should figure out what the, try to figure out a mitigation plan of what that would cost.
So basically we get down to, are we all looking at option 2B as the most logical?
Unless you hit some big obstruction on the acquisition of those lots. Right?
They all have like five problem areas.
Right. Exactly.
I would say as long as we can, with that 2B, if we can make that, that fifth access a full.
Yeah.
Full access.
Full access.
And if we can smoothly acquire those two commercial properties.
Right.
Good.
We don't need two, we just want one, one, two.
Correct. Well, I think the leaning was.
I mean, we're worried about the budget and this, you know, trying to save money.
Swearing out, now we're out here, we don't want to buy two.
The only reason it would be two is if the seller says one is worthless to us. That's how it would turn into two.
Well, also, I don't think we should, we should go to closed session if we want to start talking about strategy because.
But I do think an initial contact.
We could be costing ourselves a lot of money by having this.
We're basically authorizing our city administrator to start that conversation.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Emery?
No, that's the direction we needed tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I think I have mine as well. Intend a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Louie Johnson? Second by Larson's. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.